Next, we'll have the prayer led by Mr. Randy Bales and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance of Mr. Sammy Salton.
I'd like to ask you just a second of moments, Salton, with Charlie Kirk and assassination and all that, just like to leave that out and put that out there so we have a moment, Salton, and then I'll begin the prayer.
Your heavenly Father, we ask that you provide your grace to us and allow us to make decisions that are pleasing to you, and we just ask for your blessing upon everybody in the county and each and every person in the United States. We ask for peace in the country, peace in the county, and just ask for your peace and your healing touch, Lord, and in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Attention, the Lord's Prayer.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have Resolution 2025-44, Resolution Recognizing and Honoring Melissa Murray for her dedicated service to Jefferson County 911. Would you please come to the podium, please? With her respective commissioners, please stand with her. I understand Mr. Seals cannot.
Yeah, Sammy represents both.
Whereas Melissa Murray began her exemplary service with Jefferson County 911 on May 17, 1995, and has faithfully served the citizens of Jefferson County for over 30 years. And whereas throughout her career, Melissa has demonstrated unwavering commitment, professionalism, and compassion in her many roles, including 911 dispatcher, trainer, shift supervisor, training manager, terminal agency coordinator, and currently as administrative assistant to the director and whereas her leadership and mentorship has helped shape the careers of countless 911 professionals who now serve the public with the same dedication and integrity that Melissa has modeled throughout her tenure. And whereas, Melissa has answered thousands of emergency calls, often during the most critical and vulnerable moments in her person's life, offering calm, reassurance, and timely action frequently without knowing the outcome of those she served. Whereas, the impact of her work, though often unseen, has touched the lives of countless individuals, families, and first responders, and has made Jefferson County a safer, more compassionate place to live. Whereas, her decades of service reflect not only a deep commitment to public safety, but also a profound dedication to the well-being of this community and the profession of the emergency communications. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Jefferson County on this date as follows: Jefferson County hereby recognizes and honors Melissa Murray for her outstanding service, unwavering dedication, and her lasting impact on Jefferson County 911 and the citizens that so faithfully served. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Melissa Murray as a token of the commission's deep appreciation and respect. Hold on just a second. Is there a motion on the floor to accept this, the Jefferson County Commission? Austin Brooks made the motion. Who is my second?
Janet Norton.
Grateful, Kelly. We appreciate you and thank you. Next on the agenda, we have... Hold on just a second. Make sure things work. Next, we have approval and corrections of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to suspend the rules for the purposes of adding a item out of a budget amendment that failed in Budget Committee.
Sure. What is it?
It is for the Veteran Service Office. The amount would come out of General Fund 101. The amount is $53,095. It's for an additional full-time person in the Veteran Service Office.
Is there a second to the suspension of the rule? Do we have a second?
No second.
Question or comment? And Miss Janet?
I have a second.
We already got one.
Okay.
It wasn't on the screen.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make this commission aware of that Marissa is presently recovering from the flu. She's had not been able to complete her job just last week. I think it's kind of sad that we say we support the veterans of the United States Armed Forces, but we won't even consider in front of our public and discuss and debate why we should do this. The veterans of this county put so much money into this county. I don't think you realize that and understand that. And we've got quite a few that's sitting in this courtroom. And if you say you respect our country and you respect our veterans, then why in the heck don't we debate when things like this come up and just start jumping on it and say no? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll proceed to vote on the suspension of the rule to add. If you are for the suspension of the rule, vote yes. If you're not, vote no. We got a motion to amend. And your second was... Let us play catch-up right here. rule is suspended?
If the rule is suspended.
Okay. You'll proceed to vote on the suspension of the rule. All right, we're having a little technical difficulty. We have seven noes, ten yes. The didn't make the 11 count to suspend the rule, so... No, it would be 14. That is correct. Sorry about that. It fails. Next, on the Corrections of the Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, under approval and corrections of the agenda, if the body wishes, I'd like to move Appearance of the Citizens up to after the Consent Agenda.
All right. Got a motion on the floor to move? Is there a second? There is a second. So you want to move the...
Appearance of people, Appearance of citizens, up to Consent Agenda, right? Right, to fall right after the Consent Agenda. Yes, sir.
Does everyone understand? Hold up a second. We got to catch up here with the computer. Does anyone have a problem with TDEC moving up to before election of officers? They are here and they're from out of town. Is there a problem?
We put it before the citizens?
Nope, it would be just after.
Yeah.
Got a motion on the floor? You got a second?
So is there a reason they can't go before the citizens? Is there a reason, TDEC?
Not really. We need to clear it up because you've done moved it. This is the last thing moved, so you can't go ahead of it.
What's the motion? The motion is to move the Appearance of our landfill director, which is TDEC, with him tonight, to in between the Appearance of Citizens and the election of officers.
Can I make a motion to put TDEC before the citizens?
We just...
I know we just moved it, but I... They should go first.
Let's let the citizens go first.
Okay, let the citizens go first.
Unless you've got a second, then you're going to make a motion.
That's fine.
You want to put them ahead? Katie, are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion if there's a second.
I second.
You can't make a second unless the motion is...
She made the motion.
She did.
I second.
Okay, the motion is made to move TDEC before the Appearance of Citizens. We have four no, thirteen yes. Simple majority, it passes. So next on the agenda, we're going to have TDEC.
We're going to have to approve the agenda as we have...
Oh, I'm sorry. You are correct. Now, is there a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as corrected? Seventeen yes, zero no. Sounds corrected. The agenda is approved. Next on the agenda, I believe we have Mr. Eric Lawrence and the gentleman from TDEC, Greens.
A few weeks ago, y'all asked me to get some representation up here that you had questions for TDEC. Last meeting, you sent questions. Tell me I forward those to TDEC. Mr. Nick and Dr. Lou are here tonight to answer what they can for you. Just remember, they can't. They can't tell us how to do what to do. They can only make kind of recommendations. Before they get started, this body is invited October the 4th at 1:00 p.m. to the landfill for demonstration of shredding. I have one that I... They've been gracious enough to come, and they will set it up. Of course, October 4th. Anybody sitting in this audience, you are more than welcome to attend. It'll all be done in a contained area, be as transparent as I can. So whoever wants to come, come and see what's going on.
What time?
It will be 1:00 o'clock, October the 4th.
Thank you. We're just go to the main building.
Just go to the main entrance. We'll have it set up right there close. So everybody just walk. We'll just have to wait until Business Day gets done, Business Day gets done. So Mr. Nick and Mr. Lou will take care of it from here.
Thank you, Commission. First of all, I want to thank you for moving us ahead. I very much appreciate that. Lou and I both have to be in Nashville at 7:30 tomorrow morning. So I've come here to you today to answer anything you guys want to know about landfills, your landfills, solid waste in general. My name is Nick Lywin. I'm the statewide solid waste permits manager for the state of Tennessee with the Tennessee Department of Urban Conservation. With me is Dr. Louis Haynes. He's a professional engineer. He also functions as the permit rider for the greater Knoxville region of counties for all their solid waste concerns. We've been working with you guys on the expansion of your Class III solid waste disposal facility, construction demolition landfill, for quite a while. And we've also been working with the partial closure and gets permit corrections with the class one municipal solid waste landfill as well. We do understand that you guys have run out of capacity, the amount of cubic yards that you're allowed to have at that landfill in your permit. You've run out it. We have been keeping monitoring. We understand that you guys have been turning away waste, and you have some questions about that and the timetable going forward. I have some questions that were sent to me here. I think namely, the question is, what went wrong? Why are we at the point we are now? Landfills are difficult. We're not treating you guys like different from anybody else. There's a narrative out there that the state of Tennessee is against counting landfills. That's not true. I think sometimes just the economics are that way. You know, the big guys are taking in a lot of waste. They're making a lot of money, and money solves everything. Landfills are difficult to permit. If they weren't difficult to permit, everybody would have one in everybody's backyard. I don't think that's what the citizens of Tennessee want. You see what your neighbors in Scott County are going through, you know, trying to stop that landfill. You know, landfills are forever. We take them very seriously. The permit process is lengthy. You have to get various steps of local approval done. That was a larger stall here. We call that the Part One application. Y'all had to have a Jackson law here and to get that done. Then there has to be a lengthy site investigation done with multiple bores to make sure that the bedrock and the water table are correct and is protective. And that takes at least a year of monitoring and multiple forms to determine the high and low groundwater monitor. And then, once that's done, then engineering is submitted to us to figure out a way to place this waste so that it doesn't leach into groundwater, that doesn't leach into surface water. This is just CND waste. It is mostly inert, but things happen. We do have to make it protective. You know, things end up in the roll-off, and they end up buried, and we never see them again. So we do have to have a certain level of permability and a certain separation of that groundwater table. With that, you know, I can ramble on forever about landfills. I want to answer your questions, specifically if there's any technical questions. I've got Dr. Haynes here to help me out.
So the question I had sent in was, has Jefferson County fully cooperated with all the requests that your department has made of them?
Yeah, I think, I think, first, I want to commend you to, although difficult, the turn away of waste and making those steps, that was, I mean, you ran out of capacity and you had a slight overfill. You started to turn away waste. That's hard to do. You did the right things. You hired consultant firms. We could describe this as just the perfect storm of missteps. You know, I could go into the details. I don't want to throw any one item under the bus. I don't think it's any... I definitely have Jefferson County's fault. You hired consultants. You hired professionals to get this to completion, and there were hurdles and problems along the way. We always say that when you, when you think you're out of capacity, it's too late. You know, minimum, for Class I MSW municipal solid waste landfill, the professional industries, when they're 10 years out, they start planning, like, you know, just in case everything goes wrong. They don't want to be left out of capacity. When a large, like Lakeway or, you know, the Echo State and Solomon County, they're planning 10 years, always at 10 years out. So we started a little late. You guys got the Part One and local approvals started with a work plan in middle summer of 2021. That took a very long time to get to us. It didn't get done for six months. I mean, that's not anybody's necessarily fault. It takes that long sometimes. You had to have the necessary public steps. We got that hydrogeologic study to establish the groundwater tables. That didn't come to us. We got incomplete submittal, basically, summer of 2022. It did not have groundwater elevations on it. I mean, the very thing that we wanted, we did not have groundwater depicted. There is some karst in this area. There's sinkholes. We want to make sure that there's no voids in any of that landfill. That wasn't fully described to us. Just basic things that we were expecting a landfill submittal. It's probably known to this board that that consultant firm was relieved and another one was brought on. And then, we got in, that's finally got that complete hydrogeologic into us in December of 2023. We can't even talk about the engineering and the drainage and the stormwater and everything until we know that the site is suitable for a landfill. So we got that complete in, and then we finally got the engineer and the operations manual, all those items in, into, in the summer of 2023. And that was deemed incomplete. Basically, we were lacking some detail in how the old landfill was going to tie into the new landfill. Sheets weren't matching each other. We can't sign off with our staff, Lou being a professional engineer, on a project that had errors all over it. We promptly submitted those errors to the consultants. We got partial answers back. We do a second deficiency notice. We get partial answers back. We do another. We got partial answers back. We have with the consultant firm, LDA, we've had multiple phone calls. We actually had a video call last week on Wednesday or the week before on Wednesday, last week on Wednesday, to go over line by line what we were expecting from the submittals and we, from a document filed in July, a 12-page document that outlined detail by detail the errors in the, in the submittal. Those errors are not unexpected. Every landfill usually goes through at least one of those steps where we go through. Because once we place waste in the ground, we can never take it back. It's going to be there forever. So we're going to make sure that this thing is perfect. The landfill proposal has to be perfect. You know, you may lay over your Class I over that landfill one day. It has to be solid. So that's the point we're at. We, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. I know you're, you know, doing some financial hardships. In the meantime, you diverting waste at a higher rate, and the capital costs that you put into this was high. And I know there's some frustrations there.
Sure.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Is there anything Jefferson County can be doing additionally to what's already being done to streamline this process?
Well, first of all, there is, I mean, you have one option that you can do right now. You know, a Class I, your Class I trash landfill, your municipal solid waste landfill, it's a jack of all trades. It can take CND waste. So there is an option to, in the interim, take waste into that. Now, that consumes airspace that could be used, and that ends up airspace faster. So there's, you know, you might want to see how fast you're filling it up. That's an option you want to do. In the interim, you definitely can take that waste still into your Class I that does have... That's your decision today. But, you know, just, just solid waste department's doing a good job of consultants, the consultants doing a good job working with us. Like I said, I think we've got good light at the end of the tunnel, but, you know, it's still going to be months out. Just...
Six, three?
The moment I get all of my answers to the permit, treated the same way as every other county, treated the same way as every professional firm out there, soon as I get those pages of errors buttoned up into me, myself, Lou, the permanent team, we'll review process, and we will go out with the notice in the table. We'll have to do a public notice. We'll have to do a newspaper. We'll have to have 45 days of public comment. So the moment everything is to us correctly, you have to add 60 days. So just know that. You have to add 60 days for the public commentary and everything else. You have to add 60 days for the public commentary and everything else. So if they're back at their offices, they can.
Can everybody hear me? I've got that Army voice.
Sir, would you please come over towards the microphone so we can pick you up?
Okay.
Thank you. I'll step back here.
No, my Army voice will carry across the board. Okay. Good evening. My name is Dr. Lewis Haynes. I work with Tennessee Department of Land Management here at TDEC. One of the issues we've run into this landfill, and this is more of a technical issue, which is why I want to bring it up, is that we're looking at this landfill, doing the hydrogeologic study, which has been an issue with this from the beginning, it's because the terrain where we want to put this landfill is not easy to develop. Building anything in this area would be difficult. If you go through the, the study you guys have sent to us, you will find when they were doing the borings in this thing, they found proto sinkholes, they find perch fluids, they find all these things that we don't want to find under where we're going to put a landfill. And so all of these issues have to have solutions in the engineer. So if this was a simple, I can dig a hole, it all works out, I've tamped down the ground and everything works great, it's easy to put a landfill in, but okay, 99% of the time it doesn't work that way. In this case, with the karst terrain, where we're locating it, how the soils look underneath it, and like I said, there's three borings in particular that found issues. Now, last week, we just spoke with the engineering firm and the geology firm they hired, didn't do the extra work, so you can imagine they've already gone into another firm to look for a series of expertise and talked about how they're going to add additional structuring into this to make this landfill work in that footprint. So this is, I mean, I'm not trying to confuse her with this, but if we've got to take these kind of engineering structures to use that piece of ground, it's a slightly more complicated problem than just digging a hole and putting trash in. Does that make kind of help a little bit? And that's why that particular spot has been sort of an issue for the last few years when we start dealing with this stuff. I mean, we literally, they almost, it was like a checklist of everything you don't want to find under a landfill and they hit all of the boxes. Now, there's a way around it, but it just takes time and people have really got to get in there and figure out what they're doing right. Does that help a little bit? And that is also going to dictate time. Because once we get this approved, we've got to build this too.
Yep.
And all that dictates time.
Thank you, both of you gentlemen, and thank you, Eric, for setting us up. I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Does anyone else have a question or comment or would like to speak to these gentlemen? If not hearing any gentlemen, we appreciate you coming out with the information. Thank you.
All right, we're available anytime. Knoxville Field Officer, downtown Knoxville, call us anytime.
Okay, next on the agenda, we are down to the appearance of citizens, I do believe. Steve McSmith, you will be first. Second will be Linda McSmith.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Steve McSmith, 3766 Island View Road in the Pearse Chapel Community, District Eight. Couple of months ago or more, Terry Dockery called me to tell me before it was public that he had a health problem. And a long conversation, talked about his future plans. There were subsequent conversations. Maybe three weeks ago, he called me to tell me that he was going to recommend WD Henry to fill his seat that he was exiting until at least the election next year. We had a lot of conversation about it. And I let him know that I already had made a decision about somebody else. He respected that. Terry has been the best, the best advocate for our Pearse Chapel Community since I met Terry in 2017. He has gone out of his way. He's done his due diligence. He's investigated issues. He has really been an advocate for us. I respect him immensely and he knows that. This country and its governing bodies are supposed to be all about choice and I want as much choice as I can get. I've owned property here since 1990. I pay taxes here. This is my full-time residence. I have no others and I'm interested in this county, its business, my neighborhood, my neighbors, all the people in this county and where my taxes go and how they're spent. I want the people whom I have an opportunity to elect to have choice as well. In this instance, I don't believe there's enough choice involved here. And I think anybody that's looking at this seat in the future should have at least an opportunity to be in it now in the interim situation. I mean, no disrespect to Mr. Henry. I don't know him, know nothing about him really, but I know what I know. I've had more than one commissioner tell me, well, this is the way it's always been. That's a problem. That's a problem in this government. Just because this is the way it's always been, doesn't make it right or necessary. I've also had people tell me, well, I've known WD Henry all my life. I went to school with Mr. Henry. Even he's a friend in fact, I don't know. But for that reason, I'm going to vote for him. I'm asking you simply to give me and the voters in District Eight and anybody else who might be interested in that seat, a choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Linda.
Linda McSmith, 3766 Island View. We love Terry. He helped us help mediate things with the county and work with us. He was a Godsend for us and he really helped us out a lot. We know that tonight you're going to be looking at replacing his seat for the interim and then there'll be the upcoming election. We would like somebody that's going to be there ongoingly in that position, not temporarily, but ongoingly. Like Steve said, we don't know Mr. Henry. We've never seen him here at a meeting. You know, Steve and I come to these meetings. We speak frequently. We hear from our community and we like to communicate forward what we hear and what we see and, and let you know that. So we will be supporting Mr. Jim Fox for the election. And so if he is nominated tonight, we would like you to take consideration of him because we feel he has attended meetings, he's been here, he's spoken up, he's come out to our community to look at things that have been issues, he's come out, met with us, ridden around to find out what's going on in our community. That's important to us. If you're not going to be interested in what's happening in your community, then why are you sitting here if it's only your views alone? So think about that now and for upcoming elections. Also, as you're thinking about those elections, some of you are going to be running again and some won't be. Think about who's going to be coming into those seats. Think about your seat on the commission. Have you been active? Have you been engaged? Have you looked at what's in your packets? Have you read through it? Are you coming prepared? I come prepared for your meetings. I would expect that you come prepared, but it looks like people don't even know what's always on the agenda. They don't know what's in that packet. A lot of people don't attend a lot of meetings or committee meetings and I think there should be some type of requirement for attendance to meetings. So many absences a year should be allowable. And thirdly, the short-term rentals. I understand there's some problems with them and we need to get through some loopholes of legal, but we need to move forward and we need to move forward quickly. Legal needs to find out what that problem is and get it sorted so that we can move forward to protect the residents that live in the communities where these are moving in because they are disrupting the normal life of the people that live there as permanent residents in the communities. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, as we move along, youth leadership, are you in the house tonight? Please stand up so everybody can see you. Hope you learned something. Next, Lance.
Good evening, Jefferson County Commissioners. My name is James Lance. I'm a 27-year veteran of the US Armed Forces residing at 2246 Peninsula Drive, Jefferson City, Tennessee. I am here on behalf of the citizens of Dogwood Acres, some of whom are present tonight. First, once again, I request the commission approve the short-term rental revenue tax resolution that was on tonight's agenda. This resolution will add another new source of operating revenue to the county coffers. This tax will be borne by individuals, majority of whom do not even reside in our county. Secondly, our request once again, commission increase the level of transparency regarding how it conducts the county's business. As elected officials, you owe that to your constituents. I applaud the efforts of Ms. Carrie Davis for making Commissioner DeSousaire packets information available via publicly accessible website. Jefferson County constituents can now review this information beforehand in order to clearly and concisely express their viewpoints during the appearance of citizens portion of the meeting. However, I question how some items come to be placed on the agenda, especially when it appears the majority of the county commissioners are not provided the required background information to discuss the issue at hand. When instances of this nature occur, it promotes a sense of confusion at best and impropriety at worst. Either way, it robs these commissioners' ability to make an informed decision in keeping with constituents who elected them. For example, the proposed acquisition of more property at cost of $1.75 million, that's our taxpayer dollars, appeared to catch the majority of county commissioners by surprise. One can only assume this information was not included in the red ad packet. Subsequently, we now know the property was recently appraised at $1.2 million, $550,000 less than the previously discussed price, a significant difference. We've also discovered the owner served as a county commissioner, a fact that could have been disclosed by proponents of the acquisition. This incident further highlights the fact that this commission has no plan to develop our county, simply because you've got $2.2 million sitting in a line of accounting does not give anybody the chance or the opportunity to spend it on some bright shiny object. In fact, how public taxpayer dollars are spent should be in keeping with publicly agreed upon plans to develop our community. In summation, transparency in government is more than just a buzz phrase. It's a foundation for good governance and safeguarding the public's trust. Trust that was placed in each of you, that was voted for you to represent their viewpoints and interests. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, moving along with the agenda. Are you coming up? Next, we have election of officers and first is the appointment of Commissioner of District The floor is now open for nominations.
No disrespect to Mr. Henry, but I agree with the people in him that have stepped up. GM showed that he's willing to do the job, he wants to do it and I think he's got good ideas, so I'd like to nominate Jim Fox.
Nomination on the floor to nominate Jim Fox as their second.
Nominations don't need a second.
There is a second. All right, floor is still open for nominations.
I'll nominate WD Henry.
We have a nomination on the floor for WD Henry. We have a second for Mr. Sammy Solomon. The floor is still open. Is there a motion for nominations to see? So moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Brooks, second by Tina. All right, the, the choices will be Jim Fox or WD Henry. We will roll. If you're for Fox, say Fox. If you're for Henry, say Henry. Want to understand? When you're ready, sir. Is there a right to speak? Sure.
I just wanted to share with commission that, I want to share that with the other commissioners, that I have had multiple requests for that from the people that do live in that area.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not hearing any, will proceed to vote.
Katie Hefner.
Henry.
Janet Norton.
Fox.
Austin Brooks.
Fox.
Jim Snodgrass.
Fox.
Greg Burr.
Fox.
John Johnson.
Henry.
Tim Sales.
Henry.
Sammy Solomon.
Henry.
Rob Levens.
Fox.
Rancson Douglas.
Fox.
Randy Bales.
Henry.
Aaron Lloyd. Ronnie Cohen.
Henry.
Jimmy Carmichael.
Henry.
A.J. Walker.
Henry.
Marcus Reed.
Fox.
Heidi Thomas.
We have a nine to eight vote. I believe that is correct. Is that correct? Jim Fox leads by one vote. Do we have a motion on the floor? Or you seconded it or did you make the motion?
Sure, I'll, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Mr. Solomon.
I've been over here for a long time and normally how they do this is the person that's in that district. They take and recommend who they like for that position. I have never seen it go the way that it has. And normally, every commissioner has voted for who that commissioner requested to take that person's spot. I just like to say that. So y'all need to rethink it and let them run in May and whoever gets the most votes can take it over.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor to allow to speak. Mr. Snodgrass.
Since I'm number, okay, I'm number one now. Appreciate that, Sammy, but actually, I came into this process some, few years ago where that exactly didn't happen. I was nominated by someone from the Danridge Group versus someone else was nominated by the three that, or the two that sat here. And I think the other person won it and I believe it was 11 to six. So it wasn't every single person that voted in that particular case, so. Yield.
Anyone else? Ms. Rock.
We also broke protocol when Tommy Music died in my time also in the 7th district at the time, we nominated someone else. Rita came in. We paid for it for a little while, but then we left it streaming. So we've not always done that. It's not true.
Anyone else? Katie Hefner.
I just want to say I've had conversations with Terry Dockery too and I will miss sitting up here with Terry. I looked at him for guidance. I watched his votes. I thought he was neutral and he tried to do what was best for the community. I have a ton of respect for him. I know because I've talked to him for a while, this has been heavy on his heart and he has chosen someone he feels will be good for the community. I know there were some concerns with WD Henry because I guess he missed meetings before when he was on commission. when he was on commission, and I was told that his work situation has changed, and he will be actively at the meetings, more so than he was before, because it was a work conflict, they wouldn't let him be here. And my vote, I'm going to respect Terry's request because I have a whole lot of respect for him, and I have nothing against Jim, I think you would make a good commissioner too, but at this moment, I'm going to go with Terry's request.
Mr. Ronnie Coleman. Wait a minute, wait a minute, I think Ransom, would you want to speak to this because you had done spoke once, but sorry about that, Ronnie, it's like Ransom speak, and then it will be your turn.
Again, no disrespect to you, Mr. Henry, and of course, I want to respect what Mr. Dockery says, or, you know, what his wishes are, but like has been mentioned, you know, your attendance record wasn't always, you know, subpar, and one thing I can say for sure is Mr. Fox has been at every meeting I've been at, and I think it's important to remember that we are an elected position, and if the people in his district or their wishes are Mr. Fox, I think we should respect that. I'm all about taking care of my buddy, but this is, we have to remember what we're here for and who we're representing, and I think we should do what's best for them.
Marcus Reed.
Terry Dockery is one of the commissioners that I respect very much, and one of the things that I think Mrs. Smith said, or Mr. Smith, they both have talked to Terry, they explained to him who they desired, evidently quite a few people from that community is behind Mr. Fox, and I can understand that. Mr. Fox has been here at every meeting, I've only missed once in seven years. It's important for us to be here, it's important for us to listen to what they are asking out there. They're asking us to consider Mr. Fox, give him an opportunity to get his feet on the ground when he runs for election to see if he gets elected. I think that's only fair that we start listening to the citizens. I do not hear any bias in anyone. Everyone asking us for a change. Side from each one of us, are we going to speak the truth, are we going to do a song and a dance, are we going to support the good old boy network, are we going to do what's right? And what's right is listening to them say they would like to have Mr. Fox in their district seat, and they have let Terry know that, and knowing Terry Dockery, he accepted that and is not going to get upset if he doesn't get what he wished, and I pray the best for Mr. Dockery. Thank you.
Anyone else? We will vote on the motion, Ronnie.
I'd like to say Terry Dockery is well-respected in District Eight, which is the south side of the county. If he hadn't have been and hadn't been doing a good job, he wouldn't have been elected four times. I think his recommendation for somebody to fill a position that he served in for 15 years, he knows that person, he knows what type of person they are, he also knows that he can handle the job. You can call it the good old buddy system, you can call it whatever you want to call it, but the truth is true. Come election time, I'm sure WD will be running, then we'll let the citizens speak, for sure. That's all I got.
Anyone else? We'll proceed with the vote to let them speak. If you wish to hear from both candidates, vote yes, if not, vote no. 16 yes, 1 no, the candidates will speak. We will start on our list with Mr. Jim Fox. Come to the podium, sir. He will have three minutes, sir.
Hopefully I won't mean all that. Terry Dockery has been well documented that he's been serving District Eight in the county for 15 years. I salute him and respect him for that, and this nomination process, I mean no respect toward Terry, my thoughts and prayers are with him, and I do wish him a speedy recovery. I believe the choice, your choice should rely on who is best to represent District Eight and the county as a whole, the same as if you were filling a position in your business, for your business. As you all know, I have been involved and have been at every work session, business meeting, relevant committee meeting, including the Planning Commission and the Service Commission, with one exception, which is the most recent Planning Commission meeting because it was rescheduled, and it was a conflict with the Jefferson Sheriff's Citizens Academy. So I went to the Citizens Academy to further my knowledge of what that department's all about. I have spent countless hours searching key issues that will affect District Eight and the county as a whole. Because of my regular attendance, I am well aware of the issues before this body, and have been here to listen to discussions and feel that I could take the office and be a valuable addition immediately. I come with a positive attitude and a vision for District Eight and preserving the county forward, and do ask you for your consideration and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I can say, you know, I don't, it's true about my attendance, I'm not going tonight. With the work scheduled, I was put on the restructuring of our company, 7:00 at night till 7:00 in the morning is a long shift, and our meetings were at 9:00 of the morning, it's pretty tough to make that. You know, I know a lot of you and a lot of you I don't know, but I respect you and thank you, it's all for your service to this county. And, you know, to Mr. Fox, he's been out, you know, telling everybody in our community about my voting record, and that's fine, I'm not into dirty politics. I let my name stand for what it is, you know, and so if anybody does change their mind vote, I greatly appreciate it, and also, I can guarantee y'all will be at the meetings and I'll be helping our district along with the county the best I can. With that being said, if I am appointed and if I am elected, and I'll say right now I'm announcing my candidacy for 26, and, but I will also want to help the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department by forfeiting my pay for the remainder of Terry's time if it works out, and if I'm elected to the road officers that is not, you know, a sergeant or whatever, they're the people, you know, that put their life out there every day for us, and so it's not about the money or the power. I just want to try to do what's right for the people of this county, and, you know, I want to congratulate everybody and wish everybody the best in their election for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will proceed to revote. When your name is called, do likewise. Fox or Henry?
Katie Hefaker.
Henry.
Janet Norton.
Fox.
Austin Brooks.
Fox.
Jim Snodgrass.
Fox.
Greg Byrd.
Fox.
John Johnson.
Henry.
Tim Seals.
Henry.
Sammy Solomon.
Henry.
Rob Levens.
Fox.
Ransom Douglas.
Fox.
Randy Bales.
Henry.
Aaron Lloyd.
Fox.
Ronnie Coleman.
Henry.
Jimmy Carmichael.
Henry.
A.J. Walker.
Henry.
Marcus Reed.
Fox.
Heidi Thomas.
Fox.
So, just to share with everyone, in anticipation of something like this happening, there's nothing in our procedures that governs this not reaching the 11, 11 numbers, and I spoke with Doug earlier today, there's no precedence out there, our options are to keep going until someone changes sides, or changes their position rather, I don't want to say sides, or we can postpone to the next monthly meeting. I move we postpone it to next month.
We have a motion on the floor to second to postpone to next month? Is a comment or question? We have 13 yes to postpone, 4 no. It will be postponed, it will be on the agenda for the next monthly meeting. Next, the floor will be open for nominations for chairman. Floor is now open.
I nominate Jim Snodgrass.
We have a nomination for Jim Snodgrass.
Nomination Carmichael.
Okay, I need, I need seconds here.
Second.
Don't make me, that's right, I'll stand corrected. Had too many things going on at one time. We have a nomination on the floor for Jim Carmichael, right? Nominations are still open, is there a motion?
Move nomination cease.
Okay. This vote is for chairman, if you are for Carmichael, say Carmichael, sir.
Good. We're both Jim, so.
We're both Jim, so we're going to use last names, that's why I started out with last names. You'll be voting for Carmichael or Snodgrass?
Katie Hefaker.
Carmichael.
Janet Norton.
Snodgrass.
Austin Brooks.
Snodgrass.
Jim Snodgrass.
Snodgrass.
Greg Byrd.
Carmichael.
John Johnson.
Carmichael.
Tim Seals.
Carmichael.
Sammy Solomon.
Carmichael.
Robert Levens.
Snodgrass.
Ransom Douglas.
Snodgrass.
Randy Bales.
Carmichael.
Aaron Lloyd.
Carmichael.
Ronnie Coleman.
Carmichael.
Jimmy Carmichael.
Carmichael.
A.J. Walker.
Carmichael.
Marcus Reed.
Snodgrass.
Heidi Thomas.
11 to 1?
11 to 6.
11 to 6. I guess I'll stay your chairman for a while. Next, we have Chairman Protip.
Nominate Sammy Solomon.
We have a nomination on the floor for Sammy Solomon. Anyone else?
Nominate Jim Snodgrass.
Nominate Jim Snodgrass. We have a motion, nomination cease.
Chairman, I would like to withdraw my name.
You would like to withdraw?
Yeah. Yes.
Anyone else? Name has been Mr. Snodgrass has withdrawn his name, so Mr. Solomon, your chairman Protip. We will need to vote anyway. Or we can make a motion to accept by acclamation.
So what is that we have?
We have a motion?
Second.
We have it. Who said second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. Next, we have chaplain.
I nominate Joe Coleman.
The way you nominated Joe Coleman. Anyone else?
Move the cease.
Move, nomination cease. We can accept this, but not pro motion. Motion?
Yep.
Who's the second? Are you making the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll say.
You'll say. Get a lot going on here at one time. Anyone opposed? Not hearing any opposition. Next, we have parliamentary. Ransom.
Jim Snodgrass.
Jim Snodgrass.
Sick. Move to cease.
Move to cease. Does anyone have a problem? Okay, let's move right along to approval of minutes. Let us, let us clear up some computer work here, and we will be ready to go. We have a motion for Katie Hefaker, second to Jim Snodgrass. Proceed to votes. Mr. John. 17 yes, 0 no, passes. Next, we have approval of notaries and bonds. So, do we have any names to add?
I passed out an additional list, six names.
You have an additional list that's been passed out of six names. Is there a motion? Is there a motion on the floor in the second? Question or comment? Not seeing any, proceed to vote. 17 yes, 0 no, passes. Next, we have nominating committee.
We met tonight, and we had the Conversation Board, Baby Hammer, Hammer from September 25 to September 2030, Building Inspection Board of Appeals, Jimmy Carmichael from 25, September 25 to September 27, Ed Franklin, Tom Laken, and Chuck Tapp. Finance Committee, Greg Byrd, Randy Bales, Katie Hefaker, Jim Snodgrass. Industrial Development Board, John Miller and Bill Foster.
You want to take them all at once?
Yes. They were all approved tonight.
Question or comment? We'll proceed to vote. We're taking them all together. 17 yes, 0 no, passes. Next, we have reports from elected officials. Mr. Mayor, do you have? Next, we have reports from elected officials, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything for the agenda?
Just a layer from the comptroller's, I'm not touching, approval page.
Does anyone have a question or comment for the mayor? Next, on the agenda, we have chairman's comments. I have a letter here that I would like to read to you from Deborah Scarlett, John Neal's. If you'd just bear with me for a second. "On behalf of our entire family, we want to extend our deepest gratitude for the incredible support, gift baskets, thoughtful messages, and heartfelt prayers we have received during this time. The kindness shown to us has been a tremendous comfort. We have been especially moved by the many gifts and donations made to John Ryan and Jackie, J.D., me and John Neal's memory. It has been truly touching to receive notes from commissioners, community members, knowing that his name is remembered and his family cared for him means more to us than words can express. We are grateful beyond measure for the many stories and personal memories that have been shared, each one a reminder of the lasting impact John Neal had on this county. Hearing how his life and work touched so many has brought us both joy and peace. His legacy is alive in these stories, and we hope they continue to be spoken and shared for years to come. If John Neal were with us tonight, he would tell you how much he loved serving as a county commissioner. He loved his hometown of Newmarket, and you all know how deeply he loved being a farmer. He believed wholeheartedly in the strength and leadership of this county and the individuals who have dedicated their lives to serving Jefferson County in every way. He often said that the members of county commission were backbone and leaders of the county, and he was proud to be one of you. John Neal worked tirelessly to model leadership, integrity, and service, hoping to inspire those who would follow in his footsteps. He poured his support, time, and hopes for the future in the county commission, knowing that this group would continue to uphold, support, and respect Jefferson County's way of life they represent. He took great pride in representing all aspects of the county committee. From the bottom of our hearts, thank you. We are blessed by each of you. I will leave you with a scripture verse John Neal liked to quote to me often. It identifies the importance of wholehearted commitment and perseverance. Those of you who knew him personally will, personally will smile, as it is so John Neal. Deborah, keep your hand on the plow and don't look back. Look nine six two. We love and appreciate all of y'all. Deborah, J.D., and John Ryan." Next, under chairman's comments, the chairman has a new phone number, and it will be emailed out to everyone. That the, we have separated my personal phone from the commission work, so we can be a little more thorough with keeping up too many phones ringing at the same time. So, the phone number I have now is eight six five nine oh two eight one zero one, but it will be sent out tomorrow. I'm sorry. Eight six five nine zero two eight one zero one. Now, it's time to move right along here. We got one other thing that I had under chairman's comments that I'd like to speak to about, is I would like for the county commission to consider and give thought and talk amongst yourselves about returning to the work session. I feel as chairman that we need to return to having a good work session, to help people and hash out our differences openly in the session, so I would like for everybody to consider. We used to meet eight times a year, we used to meet eight times a year with a special call in June. And you know, I would like to hear everybody talk about it. And next month, come back with, could make this work better. On the cutting edge of information, and the information is changing, and the only way to learn is to be here. The more you're here, the more you're gonna learn. So, we need to get everybody on the same playing field, and that's all I have for you. If anybody's got a question for me, I'll answer. Let's.
I have a question, but can we put on the agenda next month where I would like to go eight months a year like we used to with the work session?
All we gotta do is. At the next meeting.
We need to check the process. If we made a motion to implement, there is a rescension process in there, so I can look into that.
Yeah, we'd take a two thirds vote. Because you're actually changing how you're conducting business, you actually be doing it more. All right, it'll be put on the agenda next month, and we will move right along. County attorney, Doug Brennan, do you have anything for us? Next, we're down to finance department, Jessica Elders.
As the mayor mentioned, I included under myself as well the approval letter from the comptroller's office, so our budget has officially been approved, for those that have asked about it recently. I did want to give you, we finally have our fiscal year closed, so I wanted to give you the, the results. I know normally you all have to wait till October for this, so you get a month ahead on this. This is unaudited financial information, I do like to put that journal entries or to reserves that may reflect fund balance. Also, do want to thank you guys as a committee. I give thanks to the elected officials, department heads, and the staff, and especially you all, for the commitment to financial responsibility and careful stewardship of the county's resources. So, our general fund one oh one rollover was around three million dollars. The, the attributions for that were local option sales tax, our property tax, and our patient charges, which has to do with EMS. Those were the top ones. We did have some savings on our payroll, because as explained when I gave it to the school board payroll, when we budget for open positions, we have to budget the full amount for if they take family insurance coverage, and if they come in and only take single coverage, we do have savings there. So, people change their coverages all the time, so we have that. That, that is mainly the, the items that contributed to the three million dollar rollover for fund one oh one. That puts us sitting around seven point six million dollars in our fund balance. Some of the budget amendments that are being presented coming up are utilizing fund balance, but as of July, it was around seven point six. Sanitation fund one sixteen, we're always watching it and watching the cash on it. Last year, we rolled about two hundred thousand, this year was around the same. So, the current fund balance unassigned in July is a little over seven hundred thousand dollars for sanitation fund one sixteen. Highway fund one thirty-one had about a one and a half million dollar roll. The huge contribution to that was the gas and motor fuel tax. So, you will see a budget amendment coming before you, where we have to make sure that we budget the maintenance of effort for highway departments, and I'm having to increase our budget around eleven thousand dollars, because it's based off of actual revenue. We don't know our actual revenue until we close our books. So, now this year, in the budget cycle, we do have to increase it about eleven thousand dollars. They base it off of a five-year average for the revenues on the highway department. I did give the school board, so I'll go ahead and let you all know, school board, I think I brought it up, but you've probably read it, they do have some pending budget amendments as well that's utilizing, I believe it drops them down to about ten point six million. There's really mainly two things here. Local option sales tax is the first one that contributes to that, it came in around two million dollars higher than we budgeted. You have to remember, I have to remember, so I need to remind you all. We have a maintenance of effort that we have to maintain on the schools. So, I know there's a lot of talk and a lot of chatter, but the maintenance of effort, we, we can't increase revenues if we don't think we're gonna match them, otherwise the county has to pay over those funds to them. This last budget cycle, we were able to shift a penny back to general fund one oh one from the schools, general fund one forty-one. And also, the local option sales tax was high, but the payroll savings on theirs, eighty-four percent of their entire budget is payroll. So, that's where each year we have a large role on the payroll, because insurance. You can't, you have no idea what, when you hire an employee, or if an employee retires and we hire a new one, we have no idea what they're gonna come in at, so we have to budget family coverage. That's a big one, also, just shifting of employees either retiring or leaving, and not filling those positions right away. So, so, do you all have any questions on the financials? Perfect.
Thank you, Jessie. Next, we have Mr. Tam Seals, the budget committee.
Jessie, you want to go with them, how many can we take? Sammy's always won't know if we can take them all at once.
Parliamentary area question, there's a lot of fund balance and reserves, I'm just not sure.
Not fund balance.
I know we can't do fund balance. All these were approved by the budget committee, right?
So, item nine on your very first one, fund one oh one amendment number four, item number nine was not approved, but it was added to your, so I'm not sure when you take that. Oh, it's not, I apologize. Okay, so, your one oh one number four, all of them were approved by budget committee, except for item number nine. It is utilizing fund balance of fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and five cents, but the majority of that was your item number nine of thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Right. We gotta separate that one out.
So, I move, you know, that budget committee.
Proceed to vote. Seventeen yes, zero no, it passes, sir.
The next two do not use fund balance or reserves, you could potentially take those together. Law library, fund one fourteen, we're not doing anything, we're just adjusting the function that we coded it to in the budget. And then, fund one twenty-one opioid is just receding in funds.
So, move those two.
So, move, hang on a minute.
What about one oh one five?
One oh one five, item one, I think we skipped that one.
No, that's the next one, right?
Nope, that was the second one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I presented those separately in the budget committee.
You presented them separately, right.
Okay, I can, I can go ahead, is that your next on your vote? Okay, let me get to those. I do need to explain that one.
Sure.
That's setting aside of funds to the reserves. You'll see four of these. I'm not gonna even look at my notes. Right there is employer portion of the insurance, the county contributes a higher amount for a certain option for insurance, so I'm proposing that we can, that we contribute the same amount for the four options of insurance. So, the employee could potentially move to a higher deductible, and they could afford the family coverage at that point, because this would actually help the employee be able to afford family coverage better than they can if they chose the, the lower deductible higher cost to them. So, what I'm asking and proposing is, we have no idea who would do this, and I'm estimating what it could potentially cost if every employee that could do this would make this move. It would potentially cost up to forty thousand dollars for general fund one oh one. So, I'm proposing we set those funds to a reserve. If we don't need them at year end, let's say insurance, medical insurance didn't increase on any expenditure lines, I'm gonna move those funds back to fund balance. I just wanted, if you all approve that, that would be a great benefit for the employees in the county, and we would just have those funds set aside if it did cost extra.
So, move from the budget committee.
So, move from the budget committee.
Which one are we voting on?
We're gonna vote on fund one oh one five. I think we can take them one at a time and get them done, Matthew.
I think so.
Let's just keep trucking. Mr. Brooks, hit your button. Sixteen yes, zero no, one abstention.
Okay, so it's up to you all if you want to take fund one fourteen and one twenty-one together.
One fourteen and twenty-one together.
There's no use of.
Come on, Greg.
I'm still drinking this stuff out.
Okay. One sixteen, if we're done here. Seventeen yes, zero no. We have number four in this group, one sixteen, two. Was in between them. We'll proceed to vote.
That's part of the insurance, that's for sanitation, I think it's like three thousand dollars.
Right. Passes seventeen zero. Then we're down to fund one thirty-one, number two, I do believe.
It's showing no use of fund balance or reserves, but number, so we are using two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents.
So, move the budget committee.
We have seventeen yes, zero no, next one.
One thirty-one, number three, is moving funds to the reserves for this proposal on the insurance.
So, move.
Seventeen zero, two oh seven.
Two oh seven, number two, we are moving funds from part-time personnel to increase other salaries and wages, it is not creating a new position.
So, move.
Passes seventeen zero, last one.
Two oh seven, number three, it's moving funds to the reserves for the medical insurance.
So, move the budget committee.
Passes seventeen zero, schools.
I'm not sure we can take any of the schools together.
We'll have to take them seven.
Okay. That we originally budgeted, and now we're having to adjust it due to funding changes.
These are all moved, so.
Right. Seventeen yes, zero no, passes.
One forty-one, number two, is utilizing a hundred thousand dollars of fund balance and reserve amount, one point nine million dollars.
Seventeen yes, zero no, passes.
One forty-one, number three, is using reserves of six hundred and eight thousand, thirty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Seventeen yes, zero no.
Federal funds one forty-two amendment number one, this is aligning the grant funds with our budget.
Seventeen yes, zero no. Seven, sixteen yes and one no. Pass. Next, we have the Equalis Group Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. Sir, ma'am, everyone should do it.
I'll go for it. This is an agreement that this board approved about five years ago, and we're just renewing the agreement to allow us to do cooperative purchasing from Equalis.
Sixteen yes. Sixteen yes, one no. Next, we have separation of reserves for hotel motel revenue and economic development.
Okay, this is, this has come up after I've reached out to the state. Our hotel motel revenue was combined with funding that this board set aside a few years ago. They set aside $1 million for economic development or land purchases. They've utilized some of those funds, and there's $875,000 of those remaining, so I want to separate those between hotel motel and separate the reserves. It would be a committed reserve of $875,000, since this board committed those funds, and the hotel motel is around one point, it's little shy of $1.7 million, and it would become a restricted reserve. You would see this on your balance sheet. I just need you all to approve me to separate those.
The old business, resolution 2025-6 has been pulled, the short turnaround, has been pulled to a later date, requested by the county attorney. The next, more property presentation of information withdrawn by the property owners, no longer for sale. And...
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Did we not ask Joe Gibson to put together something on that at the last meeting?
If he wants to give a presentation, he can, but it's pulled from our agenda, so it's kind of a moot point. You put in the time, sir, it's up to you.
The commission's wish.
Does the commission wish to hear, or... Guess it's a done deal. Next, we have Mr. Rob Levins, ADA compliance, school board attorneys, establishment of
Mr. Chairman, if I could interject, if you don't mind, Rob. Facilities committee had approved the, the system for the hearing device, the money, which we then suspended the rules and approved in the budget committee. So I guess it'd be appropriate now, if this body wanted to approve it. It comes as a recommendation from the budget committee.
Sure.
Unless that needs to go to next month, or if we need to suspend the rules to add it.
You would have to suspend the rule to add that now, or we can put it on next month's agenda and get it done. It's up to the parliamentarian what he wants to do.
My first preference, suspend the rules, because we've had so many feedbacks about hearing.
We'll deal with it now. Motion on the floor to suspend the rule.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion on the floor. In a, we got a second, Jim Snodgrass, question or comment before we proceed to...
I'll just clarify that this is to add a budget item that was approved in the budget committee earlier in the amount of $5,500...
It's $5,584.41.
I was just about to say that.
We're close to $5,600, we'll go. Question or comment? Not hearing any, we'll proceed to vote. To suspend the rule. Seventeen zero, to suspend the rule.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the expenditure of $5,584 and some change, and that would come from our ADA reserves, as it was presented in the budget committee.
We have a second to make a vote. Senator Reagan. Seventeen zero, passes. Mr. Levins, forgive us for our interruption and derailment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We're on your agenda. It starts out with ADA compliance.
We got that.
If it's hearing impaired, I think we just fixed that.
Thank you, Commission, for doing that. Number two, begin working with both school board and county attorneys on establishing a legal update annually for both groups. Pretty simple, like the police, the sheriff's departments go to in-service, most of the department. So I think it's a good thing if we work together with the school board attorneys, our attorney, and just know what's coming down the road, it's gonna affect us.
Are you requesting or wanting to make a motion? Just a request?
Whatever the pleasure of the body is. I don't know how that would work with the school board.
We will request it.
Sure. If we need a motion, I'll make the motion.
We don't have to have it.
Then there we go. They can work out the dates, I guess, between the two attorneys, when we would have to have it.
Yep. We will respectfully request it.
Okay. And then number three, fireworks stand, could we push that to the next meeting for some more information from some fire departments?
All right. So you want to postpone to the next meeting?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
And put it on, it would be old business, correct? Next, we got new business, resolution 2025-45, resolution urging the General Assembly of the State of Tennessee to provide adequate funding for the Tennessee Property Tax Relief Program. Question or comment? Not hearing any, we'll proceed to vote. Pass seventeen zero. Next, resolution 2025-46, a resolution of Jefferson County, Tennessee, to adopt the 2025 Jefferson County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Pass seventeen zero. Resolution 2025-47, a resolution urging the General Assembly of the State of Tennessee to codify certain authority for school boards and students to exercise religious freedom. We'll proceed to vote. Sixteen yeses, one no. Next, we have resolution 2025-48, resolution declaring a surplus and to authorize the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office to surplus and transfer said equipment. Memorial Library to surplus and transfer said equipment. There you go. Seventeen zero, passes. There is no announcements that I know of. Does anyone have an announcement?
Dr. Zarkle passed away this morning. We need to keep his family and wife in our prayers, please.
Everybody understand that, Dr. Zarkle? Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Motion to adjourn.